Good afternoon. Welcome to the Davison County Board of Commissioners Meeting, August 25th. I'll call into order invocation and pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Shale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Those who'd like to join me. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day, Father. Father, we thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy and the ability to come together as a free people. Father, we thank you and we ask that you guide us and give us your wisdom as we interact with one another and the ability to look at each of our fellow neighbors, friends, and family as our loving Lord Christ looks at all of us. Help us, Father, as we go forward with the business of the people and guide us and help us to make wise decisions that will enhance the lives of all of our citizens. We love you, Father, and we're nothing without you, for it is in Jesus' precious name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Shale. Recognition of veterans, Commissioner McClure?
Yes. We have any veterans with us this evening, if you would, please stand. We'd like to give y'all. Now, we do have a pin for each one. If you hadn't already received one, you can come up and get one. Anybody? All right.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you all for your service. Recognition, Lexon Chamber of Commerce, Julie H- Julie Holschaw, is she here?
She may be watching on one.
Okay, all right. All right, Mr. Smith, recognition of Major Eddie Curry, please.
Yes, sir, I'm gonna ask Major Curry, and if Sheriff's in here tonight, I'm gonna let him come up as well, as I'm sure he wants to participate in the introductions here.
Thank y'all so much for opportunity to recognize such a man as this. He's been with us for over thirty-two years in law enforcement here in Davison County. Served in about anything he could do, he's done. Um, he- his last and probably the hardest duty he had, but probably one of the most gratifying is for our CERT team. He's led it honorably and done a very good job and saved numerous lives here in Davison County, I can only imagine, but um, it's a happy-sad moment. It's very happy he made it. Very sad we're losing this experience. He's a great man, and I greatly appreciate you, and you'll be greatly missed.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd just like to say a few words.
All right, go right in.
Throughout my career at the Sheriff's Office, I've seen the best and the worst of people. I've worked with many great deputies and four sheriffs over my time, each one having all their own little oddities and ways of doing things. I can say that the current sheriff, Sheriff Simmons, cares greatly about the office and its members. He works harder than most sheriffs, both in the office and out in the field. I am grateful for his dedication and leadership to the office. Also have some sorrow for what I've seen over the years and for the way the Sheriff's Office has been treated. Funding was not always granted to the office when needed. Pay was low, equipment was in poor shape, needing to be replaced. It seemed like it was always a fight to get these things that we needed. Lieutenant Yarborough was correct at a recent Commissioners' meeting when he stated, "We went seven years without a pay increase." Several supervisors were badgered at that same meeting about their pay. Why would this happen? All of this while this board was trying to decide to give some, not all, to some of the deputies a two percent raise. Two percent is not all they are worth. On an average deputy's salary after taxes, that's about twenty-eight dollars take-home pay per pay period are the equivalent of a fast-food meal. There are deputies here that came from other agencies that were not given their paid compensation for their prior experience, something the county now does. Some thirty-five deputies are on that list. If you are willing to give that prior experience to new hires, then why would you not give it to the deputies that have been serving this county for many years? One deputy on that list sits on this board, a man I greatly respect. What does that tell him from you about his worth? I've been in- I've been in budget meetings with our county manager about these same issues. His response, "If we wait long enough, the problem will correct itself. They will retire." Well, he is correct, because two have retired since then, one of them being myself. Also saying retention, it's not a problem he is concerned with, and a younger, non-experienced deputy is better because it costs less money. I would think that a- that when a citizen picks up that phone to call 911, they want the best-trained, most-experienced deputies they can get. This office has been nickelled in time for as long as I have been here. It's time for this to stop. All this coming from our county manager, a person who's been with the county some ten, eleven years and already makes more than the governor of this great state. How does that happen? Many members of this office have been here well beyond ten years. Why is their pay not at the end of their pay grade? Apples for apples, is what I've been told. Many deputies have left for higher pay incentives that other agencies give. This county refuses to give these incentives. This Sheriff's Office has turned into a training center for other agencies. We train them, give them highly specialized training, and they go to other agencies that pay for that training. Other agencies will have other- excuse me, other agencies have learned this valuable and expensive lesson. It costs hundreds of thousands of dollars to train deputies just to see them go to other places. Other agencies, by fixing their pay issues, have increased their retention rate, thus saving the taxpayers millions of dollars. When is this county going to realize, if you just do what's right, deputies will stay here and be happy? They will not have to work overtime or have other jobs just to make a decent living. With the exception of the COLA that all county employees get every year, our sheriff has only received one pay increase of one percent in his time here. I find this inexcusable. How can you justify this? It is a slap in the face of the sheriff and the office. Are you trying to punish him for standing up for the office and his deputies or for an increase to the Sheriff's Office budget, a budget that has been underfunded or defunded far too long? I've heard from this board that if we give it to one, then we have to give it to all. Apples for apples. Each person gets treated the same. I must have a different- different definition for this, because the Sheriff's Office just doesn't receive the same consideration when it comes to funding than other departments receive. The last thing I'm gonna mention is near and dear to me, our tactical team, our CERT team, our Sheriff's Office Emergency Response team. I have been a member of this team for some twenty-five years, from not knowing anything about SWAT to being the commander, everything in between. I was taught by people like Brad Glisson, Jody Schoe, Casey Tarleton, Robert Miller, and many more. Good or bad, these folks protected this county for many years. The dedication it took not only to be on a team like this, but to itself, was something no one can understand unless you were an operator. The thousands of hours of training, the mental and physical toughness, and the commitment to the team was great. I miss more birthdays, holidays, and family events than I care to remember how it's been on call twenty-four hours a day, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, since day one. But I accepted this. It was a choice I made to be an operator, just like every operator we have now or have in the past. While- while on-call, operators have to abide by certain rules of conduct, responding with a- well, at that time, not consuming of any impaired substance, being ready to up and leave at a moment's notice, with no exception, because if you acceded to excused absences, you would put off the team. We control the on-call operators due to off-duty time, because we cannot have operators hours away from a call-out or consuming while on-call. Would anyone, would any of you just up and leave at child's birthday party, a family event, any outing because you were called up? These operators do it all the time. And how does the county reward them? With a pat on their back, because on-call pay is just out of the question. There was a meeting several years ago with our county manager about the same issue. At that time, he agreed with the on-call, even going so far as to look back at pay for prior on-call times. That will stop when they realize what it would cost for making it right, stating, "If you want this, you can sue us." What a response. The team's equipment has improved greatly over the past several years, adding things like updated weapons, night vision goggles, and an armored vehicle, but at what cost? Before getting any of this must-need equipment, there was a- there was an on-duty critical event. Before getting the Bearcat, a deputy was shot. Before the night vision and weapons, several deputies were shot at a CERT call-out, resulting in a nine-hour gunfight. By the way, the sheriff who refused to give any meaningful pay increases to was there beside me, getting shot at, and returning fire. The team greatly appreciates this equipment, but more is needed, not wanted, but needed. They know the difference between wants and needs. If you are going to continue to operate a twenty-four-hour on-call tactical team that must respond within a mandated time, ready to make the ultimate sacrifice, then you need to fund them at that level. I didn't come here to embarrass or degrade anyone or anything, just to voice Eddie's opinion. An opinion- an opinion from a major, a SWAT commander, a twenty-five employ- twenty-five-year employee that has seen the good and the bad from this county. As a voting citizen of this county, I'll say this to the board that I fully respect. Please stop with the degrading of the deputies in the Sheriff's Office. Comments like a construction worker's job is just as dangerous as a deputy's job are not needed. Fund the Sheriff's Office in the future with the pay and equipment that is needed. Listen to the people, the command staff, that really knows what is going on, what is needed, and how to achieve it. Let's really give apples for apples. Let's do the right thing. Doing the county's business cannot be an easy job. Everybody wants a piece of the pie. But imagine what would happen if a citizen called 911, having a crisis, and no one responded or that response was delayed because of issues. Let's fix the problem. I appreciate the time you gave me and the job that you seven members do for this county. I've enjoyed my time here. Thank you.
All right, thank you all very much. Anybody wishing to speak at public address, the sign-up sheet's right over here. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Pat Williams? Good afternoon.
Good evening, not sure what time. My name is Pat Williams, and I've lived in Southmont with my husband, behind me, for over eighteen years. Tonight, I'd like to speak about the sportsplex and some confusion that has arisen about whether the final plans would be coming back to the county commissioners for approval. During the June Commissioners' meeting, where the preliminary plans for the sportsplex were approved and you voted to spend the four-point-one million on the architects and engineers to prepare final plans and obtain impact studies, Chairman Yates stated that the final plans would have to come back to the county commissioners for approval and that citizens would have the opportunity to provide input at that time. However, at the recent Parks and Recreation Committee meeting, Parks and Recreation Director Thomas Marshburn told the committee that the final plans would be approved by the Facilities Committee. We were confused by this, as it seems to directly contradict what we were told at the June Commissioners' meeting. We called Mr. Marshburn, and he confirmed that his understanding is the commission voted to delegate approval of the final sportsplex plans to the Facilities Committee. We would like clarification of this very important point. Will the sportsplex plans come back before the county commissioners for approval as promised? Or is this yet another example of a lack of transparency and continued refusal to engage with the community on this sixty-five-million-dollar spend of taxpayers' money? I do hope that this committee will do the right thing and bring the decision for final approval of the sportsplex plans, including a discussion of the final size and scope for the project and the results of all the environmental, wildlife, and DOT impact studies to the full county commissioners at a public hearing. As a taxpayer, I'd like to see the needs of this county taken care of ahead of this project, and I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good afternoon.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Becky Pazma, and I have spoke once before on June twenty-three here in this meeting regarding the zoning for the property in Southmont. I do see that since then, the property in Southmont is referred to as a community center. I believe that is the only way it qualifies under the current zoning for that land. We all know it has been called a destination on the East Coast sports complex by some on this board and not a community center before that time. Since then, I have been at all the commissioner meetings in person or watched them online, and I actually am appalled by the way things are handled. As Major Curry just said, I've seen sheriff deputies treated poorly when asking for a raise to keep their salaries in line with neighboring counties. Deputies needed to fill vacant positions and keep deputy retention high. I watched the jail administrators here requesting money for jail space be treated as if they were on trial while they were having to beg for more space, space that is badly needed for the safety of our county residents. There has been blatant disregard for school support staff and the many needs of the Davidson County schools. I listened to a Superior Court Judge request funds for the needed jail space. Meanwhile, many of you have your heels dug in on spending sixty-five million dollars on a sportsplex that you want. It is not a need of this county. I have read that according to your calculations, the sportsplex will be a forty-five-year return on investment. There is immediate return on investment for our county in funds spent on our local children and their schools, a sheriff wage increase, and much-needed jail space. Please reconsider this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon. Glenn Williams?
Glenn Williams. Hey, how are you? Good afternoon. My name's Glenn Williams. My wife and I have lived on High Rock Lake for eighteen years. During that time, the city of Thomasville has logged a hundred-and-fifty overflow episodes from their aging sewer collection system that have resulted in millions of gallons of untreated sewage being discharged into the Yadkin River and eventually into High Rock Lake. As recently as Jan- eventually into High Rock Lake. As recently as January of last year, twenty-three thousand gallons were released. The city of Thomasville cites the lack of funds for their inability to do the necessary upgrades that would prevent future spills. In a February Fox News story, the county margin manager Casey Smith was quoted as saying, "We've had funds available from back in 2020 through the COVID process that we didn't do like some jurisdictions did. We were able to basically bank those dollars and keep them available for a rainy day." Well, I've lived here long enough, and whenever we get a rainy day, there's a chance that Thomasville will discharge thousands of gallons of raw sewage into High Rock Lake. Apparently, a large block of county funds was previously allocated by the commissioners for construction of a sewer line connection to Rowan County. When the problem was, when the project was rejected by Rowan County, these funds became available again. The commissioners have now decided to spend these funds on a sports and water park instead. Obviously, the commissioners at one time saw the need for increasing the county's sewage treatment capacity. With the county's ever-increasing residential, commercial, and industrial development, the lack of sufficient sewage treatment capacity will soon become an unavoidable expense for taxpayers. Regarding the proposed sports complex, Casey Smith said it would cater to anybody that wants to come and utilize it, but the traveling ball leagues are really popular these days. If there's so much demand for and profit to be made from a sports theme park, then there's no reason that a private investor wouldn't jump at the chance to build it with their own money. And if they did, they would certainly choose a site that is closer to hotels, restaurants, and major highways than the Southmont location. From what I understand, most if not all the schools in Davidson County have their own baseball and soccer fields, and the county already has a very large swimming facility and water park called High Rock Lake. We have no need for a new sports and water park. I think the taxpayers who are familiar with all the important issues now facing Davidson County would agree that the county's money needs to be spent on the actual needs of its citizens.
Three minutes, sir.
I think we can rely on the private sector to finance our entertainment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dorothy, can y'all keep the applause down, please? We understand y'all have a passion against this, but it's not the way we conduct our meetings. Thank you. Dorothy Kozar? How are you this afternoon?
Hi. How are you?
Good.
I'm Chaplain Dorothy Kozar. I live in seven sixty-four Irvin Drive in Winston. I'm here to advocate for chaplains being placed in Davidson County schools. So, thank you for listening, because, especially since they say never talk about politics or religion. But politics are right here in these meetings, right? And religion guides our morals and ethics, and so ignoring either one would really be lack of accountability. North Carolina spends over four thousand dollars per minute on downstream consequences of failed childhood resilience. Since nineteen sixty, secular strategies alone have failed to manage hopelessness. Suicide rates have increased sixty-three percent in boys and a hundred and twenty-two percent in girls ages only ten to fourteen. Teachers are stressed and stretched. Forty to fifty percent resign within the first five years. Counselor-student ratio is unmanageable. But chaplains uniquely stand in the gap. They're in the military, they're in the police, in the fire departments, hospitals, and in prisons. So, our schools deserve the same. Separation of church and state is not in the Constitution or Bill of Rights, but it's to keep the government out of church. And because chaplain care is optional, there is no coercion. So, chaplains, school chaplains do not violate the Establishment Clause. A faith opposite of parents will not be pushed. An NSCA vets and certifies chaplains. Background checks are up to date and readily accessible. They operate within state and school policies and the Department of Defense guidelines. They serve on multidisciplinary threat assessment teams, and chaplains are another set of eyes on the inside. Most school shooters are students or former students. As first responders, chaplains are trained in active shooter, stop-the-bleed, and C-Tag courses. So, in closing, in life-and-death moments, when all around is chaos, nothing else really matters, and the heart cries out, "God, help us." So, chaplains help during trauma and in the aftermath. So, whether in grief, in a crisis, or everyday struggles, needs are met and hope revived. So, clearly, chaplains far outweigh any cost. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Ms. Kozar, and you may want to carry that to the school board and present it in front of the school board?
I did. Thank you for saying that. I did present that, and I also have a little extra information for each of you.
Sure. If you'll give it to him, count us out some if you need to, or they'll pass it out to us later.
One for each.
Okay.
So, at the school board meeting, I did the same, and I asked for an official meeting appointment to further discuss, because you can't describe it all in three minutes. No one has given me an appointment. I specifically asked Dr. Slate for a meeting, you know, but I've not.
I'd send that to the board members, so they could look at it, and maybe they did, so.
They, yeah, they have their copy.
And that would be a way to possibly get you on the agenda, would be the board members, but they would have to look at that. So, thank you very much for your time.
That advice.
All right. Sunny Snead?
My name is Sunny Snead, and I live on Irvin Drive. I'd like to begin with a knock-knock joke. Knock-knock. The county commissioners.
All right.
The county commissioners used your tax dollar to ruin your neighborhood without any input from you. Don't open the door. In March, you voted to use our community to build a new sports complex. We were neither notified or invited. In April, you voted to change the existing zoning regulations in our community, so the complex could be built without rezoning the land. We were neither notified nor invited. On June nine, twenty-twenty-five, you held a meeting to rezone three hundred and fifty acres of forest land in our community from residential and farming to recreational. One small sign on the side of the road was our only notification. When asked why, we were told that to notify us was cost prohibitive for a sixty-five million dollar project. You notified adjoining property owners to fulfill the minimum notification requirements. However, this is affecting an entire community, and you still continue to ignore us. Even though you voted down the rezoning to recreational use, the project will continue, and we were told there's nothing you can do about it. When you see the strong opposition from the residents of Southmont, does that make any difference to you? Why isn't the sportsplex located more centrally in Davidson County? Southmont is not. Can you imagine yourself in a similar situation? Wouldn't you do everything in your power to stop this unnecessary project from destroying your community when there are so many other ways that our tax money should be used? It seems that no one on this commission respects the citizens they represent. Do any of you think that the citizens of Southmont deserve a voice in this matter? Take a ride in our neighborhood. Look at the signs in almost every yard opposing the sports complex. Please show us that you really care about the residents of Southmont and all of Davidson County. We've heard about funds being reallocated for other past projects that weren't completed. Stop this now and reallocate for jails, schools, and safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Barry Woodward?
Just gonna kind of say the same thing that everybody else has been saying here tonight, starting with Major Curry, and going right on down the list. Everybody here is upset about the way you're spending our taxpayer money. This is not, this is not what your job is. Your job is to look out for the people of this community. Look out for the people of this county. I want a pool in my backyard, a pontoon boat, and a Harley-Davidson, but I can't have it because I don't have that kind of budget. Just because you've got sixty-four or sixty-five million dollars doesn't mean you can go out and just flippantly spend it on something you want, when there's so many other needs that need to be taken care of in this county. Almost a hundred million dollars' worth of improvements, renovations, upgrades, and new equipment are needed for just the schools alone. Not to even mention what Major Curry talked about as far as the sheriff's department and the jails. I think they ought to start bringing them to your house and dropping them off in your backyard. Or maybe the EMTs will tell you, "Well, it'll be thirty-five, forty minutes before we get to your house. See about your broken arm where you fell." I had a friend of mine, his wife fell. EMT center, five minutes from his house. It took them thirty-five minutes to get there. When are we gonna wake up and start taking care of the people of this county? Is it gonna take one of y'all getting in a wreck and having to sit around and wait on somebody to show up to help you get out of your car alive to bring it home? You're putting everybody's life in this county, everybody's life in this room, in jeopardy, because you're kicking the can down the road again. Stop it. This is not the way you're allowed to spend our money. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ron Marino?
Good afternoon. I'm Ron Marina. I'm from Waterford Point. There are two reasons why I chose to speak here today. One, the sixty-five million dollar mega-sports complex is a flawed concept. And two, because of the way the commissioners purposely manipulated the system in order to maintain secrecy about the project and to rob citizens of this county and the one thousand one hundred forty residents of Southmont, in particular, of their right to input in major decisions and their right to monitor the actions of their elected officials. The commissioners conveniently seem to have forgotten that they work for the citizens that elected them and not the other way around. Let's first of all talk about why the sports complex is a flawed concept. The public would like to know why the county spent three million dollars for three hundred and fifty acre property that was reportedly appraised and valued at much less. Although it's being justified as a community center to the residents of the county, it is simultaneously described for marketing purposes as an East Coast destination for travel-bolt tournaments, which will in truth provide limited use to the residents while it was planned from its inception to provide maximum and priority use to those teams, most of whom will be outside the county and are willing to pay for it, in large part on the taxes of county residents. The infrastructure is woefully inadequate to meet the needs of such a sports complex. If anyone's not convinced of the futility of expecting Route Eight to be the only viable road for ninety-three thousand vehicles to reach and depart the sports complex, there's a serious lack of critical thinking skills that went into this reasoning. And if the reasoning, as stated at a previous Commissioners' meeting, is the infrastructure will follow, we can dispense with wondering if there's any critical thinking skills or reasoning that went into the thinking decisions and processes at all. Its exorbitant cost robs the people of the county of much-needed improvements, a few of which I'll mention here: emergency services, law enforcement services, sewer improvements, educational needs. And I'd like to come back to the educational needs if time permits. Now, for the second part, the manipulation of the system. According to the Davidson local free, hyper-local daily news for Davidson County, North Carolina, Davidson County Manager Casey Smith said, "Since there's no zoning change or debt to be incurred for the project, the county is not required to give public notice. This is why there is no need for a bond referendum for a public hearing." Two conditions need to be met in order to avoid the requirement to give public notice. One is no zoning change. Well, there is a zoning change, whether it's proposed, or a designated community center, or recreational community. And the second change is, second is no debt to be incurred for a bond referendum. Well, let's look at this. The original estimate of the cost of the sports complex was seventy-five million dollars. The commissioners mysteriously reduced the estimate to sixty-five million dollars, ostensibly to claim that there was no need for a bond hearing. Back in two thousand and eighteen, county leaders considered a non-binding referendum on funding a sports complex. Internal polling revealed-
Sir, your three minutes is up. Is that right?
Overwhelming voter opposition prompted commissioners quietly remove the measure.
All right. Thank you very much, okay? We got a pretty tight schedule to stay on.
Yeah, I know. We have a completely tight schedule. You don't want to hear it.
Margaret Marina? Thank you. Thank you. It's just three minutes, sir. I'm sorry. How are you this afternoon?
I'm fine, sir. Thank you. My name is Margaret Marina, and I live in Waterford Point. The original design and the concept for this sports complex had indicated that it should be centrally located in Davidson County. This is Davidson County, ladies and gentlemen. This is Southmont. This is far from centrally located. So, just to give you a little bit of an indication, we are twenty-six miles from Wahlburg. We are twenty-six miles from Clemmons, nineteen miles from Thomasville, thirty-nine miles from Greensboro, twenty-five miles from High Point. And that does not take into account, that is only the mileage, this is not the time it would take to get here from those places. It's easily forty-five minutes from High Point. It's easily forty minutes from Greensboro. So, when you say centrally located, and the fact that it's for the whole county, it shows us that it's gonna take a lot longer, and it actually is going to impact Davidson County, or Davidson, I'm sorry, Southmont residents are gonna be terribly impacted, but so will the residents of these other areas, because now they're gonna be asked to travel forty-five minutes each way to bring their kids to a tournament down in Southmont on terrible roads, overcrowded roads, and overwhelmed facilities. The other thing I wanted to mention, so that's just accessibility. I mean, we know what the roads are like here. We know how wonderful it is going in and out, Lynwood-Southmont Road, and going up and down Number Eight. It gets to be very busy, especially on weekends. Now, add several boats in there, into the traffic coming along these roads, and the people coming to this area for the sports complex, it's gonna take a lot longer. It's not gonna have happy people. The other concern I have is, this is the Yadkin-Pedy watershed area. Here is Davidson County, and so what you're going to be doing is putting this facility in an area that not only has eagles and foxes and owls and all different kinds of hawks and great wildlife, you're gonna be impacting High Rock Lake, Lake Tillery, um, I can't read all these things, but the other one down here, big one, the big green spot, that's Uwari. So, all the water coming down from High Rock Lake, which is, what, two miles from where the sports complex is gonna be, is gonna go down and go and affect our state lands as well. I think it's irresponsible, and really a bad idea.
All right. Thank you very, thank you very much, ma'am.
One last thought. Most of the people I talk to just say, "Who the heck came up with this idea?" Whoever thought it would be a good one.
Seven A. We moving on to item number seven A, rezoning by Ken and Krista Nance in Tyro Township containing three point two-one acres from RS to CZRC. Mr. Crook, if you'll start this off?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Nance, you can come up and sit on the front row if you'd like. Ms. Nance, you can come up and sit on the front row if you'd like, uh, and we'll get to you in just a second. Uh, Mr. Crook will lead you off, okay?
All right. Our first rezoning tonight is a request by Ken and Krista Nance to rezone property located in Tyro Township. Tax map twenty-nine, lot twenty, um, containing, let's see, this has been amended since the legal was put in, so it's, it's originally this had two lots. It's been reduced to one lot. The legal ran in the newspaper still has the two lots, so I'll read all of that out. Um, Tyro Township, tax map twenty-nine, lots twenty, and tax map twenty-nine A, lot one, containing three point two one acres more or less. Said property is located on the south side of South NC Highway one fifty, approximately three hundred and forty feet west of the Swicegood Road intersection. Property is further described as being located on the west side of Swicegood Road, approximately six hundred and thirty feet south of the South NC Highway one fifty intersection at the address forty-eight eleven South NC Highway one fifty. Rezoning is requested to change from that of RS Low Intensity Residential District to that of CZRC Conditional Zoning Rule Commercial District. As I alluded to a little bit early, earlier, um, this has gone through several changes. Initially, there were two lots, and if you would please, uh, divert your attention to the overhead, the, um, the first request, well, the first request not only had this area in yellow, which is the only lot before you tonight, it also included lot one. The list of uses originally was much longer than it is for, um, for what's before you tonight. So basically, the request tonight is for lot twenty only. The conditions that are proposed in the CZRC, um, originally, there was a thirty-thirty building proposed. The applicants have requested to change that to a forty by sixty. Um, it'll be used for a balloon studio, retail space, with, will be the only use on the property. Hours of operation are six AM to six PM, and they have already received an NC DOT driveway permit. Um, they agreed at the planning board level to, to place a grow of, a, a row of giant greens on the western property line. Um, as a result of some negotiation with some adjoining property owners, an additional kit, condition has been proposed tonight before you that the lighting fixtures will be installed so as to not cast direct light on adjoining properties. So that's kind of what's before you tonight, um, and there's also a proposed site plan. This area, originally, there were two lots involved. The area that's highlighted with this pink color is the only area that's gonna, uh, if approved, will be rezoned. This fronts South NC Highway one fifty. Um, at this time, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you to open the public hearing.
Okay. I'm gonna declare the public hearing open. If you'd like to come up and give us a little bit of overview on what you plan to do with it, and we kinda got somewhat of overview from Mr. Crook, but you may wanna throw something else in. How are you this afternoon?
Hello. Good evening. I'm fine. I hope you are.
Yeah, I'm good.
Um, my name is Krista Nance. I live in the Reed's area on Myers Road. Um, uh, my husband and I have lived in this area for some time, actually all our life, with the exception of the time that he served in the military in the United States Marine Corps. Um, we are, uh, we have had a fiber optic splicing business for thirty years. I think that's important just due to some of the things that have been said in the past. Um, we have been business owners and we have been successful at that. Um, however, we are reaching a point in our life, we wanted to come back to this area and actually do something. And we, as Lee said, we wanted to do something that was a little bit bigger until we found out that not everybody shared in our excitement. So we have scaled that back greatly. Um, however, um, the balloon studio, um, what that is, is, um, I'm looking to do events, um, do some of the venues, also to do balloon bouquets. Um, we will be, um, also, uh, building, um, some of the, uh, backdrops, those types of things. Um, and, um, that is about all that we're looking to do at this point.
Any questions for Ms. Nance? How many employees you think you'll have, Ms. Nance?
There will be me and my husband.
So not a lot of need for parking places, is there?
Right.
I got you. Okay. With no questions from the board, if you don't mind, have a seat on the front si- front row. Uh, we'll see if anybody wants to speak in favor and opposition. Anybody wishing to speak in favor or opposition of this rezoning?
I do have one email that I need to read into the record, Mr. Chairman. Um, she was communicating with Mr. John Wheeler of our office. John, we are very concerned about a business of any kind being located on the one fifty side. The area is homes, and we don't understand why business has to come in and start having lots of activities. It would be nice to keep this area for homes. Please let us know, uh, what we need to do to keep it this way. Once it is changed to commercial type, to a commercial type lot, then we have to worry about it even changing to a more commercial type, lot type. I apologize for my message via email as I am not feeling well today and am not able to attend this meeting as I have been to all other meetings. I appreciate any consideration to keep this area homes. Uh, thank you, Joy Adams, Bigger Staff. She lives at two thirty-four Swicegood Road, Linwood. Our office promised her that we would read that into the record.
Okay. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor and opposition? All right, um, staff recommendation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, if again, if-
Uh, close the pub- public here, and I'm sorry.
If you will divert your attention to the overhead again. Right here is, uh, Food Line in Sa- in downtown Tyro. Here's the fire station. This is, uh, Swicegood Road. Sewer services have already been extended to the southeast corner, uh, or southwest corner of this intersection. This property here has sewer service available. That's a change or changing condition. Uh, the house that was on there is torn down. This property is owned by the same folks that own the Food Line property. We would probably predict at some point in the near future of, of zoning change requests for that corner. Sewer is possible for the, uh, the Nance's properties. It would gravity flow down in there. Their, their use is not intense enough to need the sewer, but the fact that it's there does qualify as a change or changing condition, which staff would contend complies with the zoning ordinance Article Seven Administration, uh, amendments. And our land development plan points out that Tyro as a, as a community is a commercial node. The, the decision tonight would be to make, is this property within the zone of influence of the downtown Tyro activity? Staff would contend that it is, and that, uh, policies one-one, one-two, one-three, one-four, one-five, one-seven, one-eight, five-six, and seven-four would su- support the applicant's request. We would recommend, uh, approval.
All right. Y'all have heard staff recommendation. What's the, um, board's pleasure?
My sense, or-
Yes, sir.
Lee, i- isn't this, um, diagonally away across the road from the nursery that's up there now?
The nursery, um, no, the, uh, the, the Tilden, not Tilden Nursery, but the big nursery that's, that's further down one fifty.
Down there on the right.
That's down there on the right. Yes, sir. That's down close to- That's down close to PHA in that area. This is, this is further north on one fifty by several miles.
Okay. Can I get a motion for approval or denial?
I can move and approve.
Got a motion to have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven-zero. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, rezoning request, item number seven B.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, that application from Mr. Luke Johnson, we're gonna, we've been asked by the property owner to request a continuance for that to the October twenty-seventh Board of Commissioners meeting. It's that, the applicant has walked away from the project, but the property owner may wanna continue on with the rezoning. There was some septic issues on site. They're trying to work those out, and they requested sixty days to see if they could do so before withdrawal. If they withdraw, they have to wait a calendar year before they can reapply.
Okay. Can I have a ma- a motion and a second to continue this public hearing till October the twenty-seventh?
Motion to continue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, item number seven C, rezoning request by Roger Dale Beasley in Cotton Grove Township containing one point oh nine acres from CURC to CZRC. Mr. Crook, if you'll lead that off.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've just received information that Mr. Beasley is out of town tonight. We did not know that until tonight. We did call earlier today and, and left a message. Um, so th- they're gonna ask for a continuance to the, um, September eighth meeting, which is your next Board of Commissioners meeting.
Okay. Can I have a motion and a second to, um-
Motion to continue.
Continue it to September the seventh, you said?
Eight. I think it's the eight, it's the ten.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank y'all.
That went faster than I thought it was going to this afternoon. Thought we was gonna be here for a while. All right, uh, items for consent. Uh, is anybody wishing to pull anything off the consent agenda? Here, none. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm sorry? I did, uh-
You did. I heard something.
All right. We ready? Next item is, uh, nine A. Commissioner Mizeo, would you like to lead this one off?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Debbie, if you'll pull up the, uh, pay plan.
So on the right hand, uh, down the bottom.
There we go. Um, while she's getting this ready, I'll add some context. Um, so this is the, the sheriff pay plan that came before the board a few weeks ago during our July twenty-fourth meeting. Um, I did ask to add it back, um, and so I'll, if you'll kind of bear with me, I'll provide some, some background for those who maybe aren't privy to it and the conversations we've had and some of the plans and, and the motion that was discussed. Um, you know, the sheriff has, has raised some concerns about, uh, the retention of officers. Um, and again, highlighting a very, again, proactive approach. Um, during our July twenty-fourth Commissioners meeting, two plans took shape. Um, and if you direct your attention, uh, all the way to the right in the green, one was for the two percent, um, increase for lieutenants and down, and that's the, uh, two eighty-seven price tag. And then the other was for the two percent increase for lieutenants and down, just like the other one, plus the slotting. And that's the, the one in the, uh, bottom right corner there. Um, as, again, for a little information on slotting, um, and I, I think an example is always good. So if, if a deputy was hired prior to the twenty-twenty-two pay study, um, and let's say they had five years of experience, um, that pay, uh, was not adjusted. However, if another deputy was hired with the exact same years of experience post the pay study, their pay was adjust- adjusted. So for the deputy who came in prior to the pay study, how does, how does he get the adjustment? He either has to leave his job here, go somewhere else, and then come back and be hired to then get the adjustment in pay. So that is slotting. It's again paying for the adjustment. It concerns, unless it's changed, and I know the numbers I'm quoting are a few weeks old, but it's about twenty-five or, or twenty-six law enforcement officers in terms of lieutenants and down. And so the motion from July twenty-fourth, um, was for the two percent increase. And again, this is the motion that failed on a, a tie vote. Again, it is a step in the right direction. All we wanna do is build on that two percent, and Commissioner Shell had made that motion for the two percent. And the difference between the two, again, between the two hundred and eighty-seven thousand and the four hundred, uh, and eighty thousand, again, is, is very small relative to a lot of other projects. So if we're gonna go, do the two percent increase, might as well correct the issue of slotting. Um, the estimated difference, like I said, between the two is about a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. Um, now, points of reference are important, 'cause that sounds like a lot of money to me, and it is a good amount of money. Um, but to put it into perspective, for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six, our adopted tax rate will yield a total revenue of ninety-one million. Given our fifty-four cent tax rate, one penny of property tax equals one million six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Again, that's in the budget. You can go and reference it. So this plan of four hundred and eighty thousand equates to not quite twenty-nine percent of one penny of property tax. So just slight, slightly north of a fourth of a penny. My, my last point, um, before I yield and pass my, uh, time over to Trip is I know some folks, uh, have expressed concern, uh, around the, the issue of consistency, and that's fair, right? If, if we, if we do this, are we, we not doing it for anybody else? And again, that's, that's a, again, fair point to raise. What I would say is that both plans, the ones, again, half of us supported one plan, the other half supported the two percent, both are making an exception. The two percent that was initially proposed is not being for all county employees. It's being for law enforcement. So it's already an exception in itself. And there have been times when we have tailored and made exceptions for other departments. Again, call them targeted retention exceptions. Call it public safety incentive. Call it a strategic exception. All I'm asking is that we, we go a step further than the two percent and expand this to include the experience adjustment. Again, that's the slotting piece. I'll turn it over to Trip.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like, at this point, with this explanation, I'd like to make a motion to revisit the two percent pay increase to include sergeants, lieutenants, and the slotting, but with one caveat. Even though I'm not statutorily prohibited from voting on a pay issue concerning the sheriff's department or, you know, ethically prohibited, I'm gonna remove myself from the list, even though I've earned that pay. I was left out of the twenty-two pay study. But to head off any potential negative chin music from any public, I'm willing to publicly, right now, remove my name from it. But I ask that we revisit it and, and adopt the, the pay increase for everybody included. The sergeants, the lieutenants, and the slotting piece with removing my name from consideration.
And I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the table.
I'm gonna have to recuse myself from this, this vote. I've been made aware from the county attorney and the county manager that I have a, uh, potential conflict. I've double-checked with the school of government, and they have agreed. Uh, my daughter serves as the DARE representative of North Carolina. She is up to have a twenty-five thousand dollar scholarship. She practically works with the sheriff in his department with, uh, Lieutenant Roger, uh, Cook. And, uh, Roger Cook is also the North Carolina president of the DARE Association, and he is adamant and involved in pushing for her to get this scholarship. Uh, the North Carolina ethics law says that if it even appears to be an ethics violation, that we should recuse ourselves from the vote. And I do respect Trip for doing that. That is a, uh, is a, is a fine line when you are a deputy and, uh, you're voting on county business and your employer is the sheriff who can fire you at will. Uh, so I'll, I will have to say that I respect you for doing that, but I also, uh, must have to recuse myself. In saying that, I will, in, in, in saying that, I will tell you this, as I have told the sheriff on the phone, as I have told, uh, Trip Kester on the phone. Even though I'm recusing myself, if I could vote, my vote would be the two percent that sits over a five percent raise that the deputies are getting. A merit and a cola. Not two percent like just, was just told that we're only just giving deputies two percent. That's a seven percent raise. That's a dang good raise. I've never had a seven percent raise in my entire career in local government. But that, that, that's a good raise. I think they deserve to slot in. I think that'd be a great thing, but I also think that every other department deserves slotting too. So if I was to vote for it, and I could vote for it, I'd vote for every county department to have the slotting done. So if I was to vote for it, and I could vote for it, I'd vote for every county department to have the slotting done, because it's a slap in the face to every other county employee, just to do it for one. So if, if y'all would vote on it, I'd say that you look at everybody. That's all I got.
Alright.
So we'll need a, we'll need a, a motion to recuse?
I have a motion to, uh, recuse, uh, Commissioner Kester and Commissioner?
Oh, I, I don't think that?
I don't think Commissioner Kester wants to be recused.
Oh, okay, you don't wanna be recused?
I'm voting for it, I just wanted my name removed from the raise.
No.
Where the raise doesn't include me. I'm gonna vote for it.
So you can vote for stuff on the sheriff's department?
Correct.
So you feel like that's legal, that he can?
Yes, we, I, I mean, a lot, this stuff, a lot of it has not ever really been litigated, but it's our, it's our best, um...
What's the, what's the law about that?
Well, the, I mean, there's a couple different statutes and, and some case law. Essentially, uh, uh, at, at the bottom, you know, at, the, the, the bottom of the issue is that, um, board members are not supposed to vote on contracts that they, where they would control, um, uh, essentially contracts where they, where, I mean, in, in this case, voting on, voting on an employment contract, um, to change the terms of that employment contract, that's, there's a statute, General Statute fourteen dash two thirty-four, um, the second statute?
Anything monetary?
What's that?
Anything monetary?
It's not anything?
Can be voted on?
It's not anything monetary, no, it's, it's, it's really, it's really has to do with a contract. And, and so the, in this case, you know, the, we're, what we're talking about is the terms of an employment contract for, um, to, to vote on it, to adjust the, the terms of that contract essentially to increase the, the pay. Um, the second, the second statute is the one that, that is, um, let me find the number here, it's, um, one fifty-three A dash forty-four. Essentially, this, this is the one that, that where you're asking to be recused, if you have a financial interest in the matter. Um, and generally, it's, it's more appropriate, um, to recuse yourself if you have a very specific interest, um,
I got you.
Versus a, so, so if you have, if you have like a, a very broad interest, like you're voting on a pay raise for everybody, then?
Or if I was voting to keep my job, or?
Right.
To keep my employ, employee?
Well, right, well, I, so if, if you're voting on something that's specific to you, that would be viewed as a conflict versus voting on something that's an overall pay raise, for example, or voting on the overall budget for the sheriff's department, we tend to view that as not being a conflict.
I got you.
So?
Just to remove any doubt, that's why I preempted that by saying I'd remove my name from the raise.
But I get that, but I didn't understand, so, so four deputies could serve up here and vote for anything the sheriff wants?
That's, yeah, I mean, I, that's, that's, I mean, I, if, if it apply, it applies to Mr. Kester, I mean, it would've, it would've applied.
If they could vote on that, that would make the sheriff all-powerful. He would be untouchable, like literally.
Assuming they lack independent fault.
I don't, I don't think there, I think there would have to be a, an ethical...
When you recuse somebody, you also recuse him from the discussion.
Well, we haven't recused anybody yet, but we're on that pathway to do that. We gotta make a motion to approve it first, but?
Okay, I was just making the point.
Um, so anyhow, going back to, so again, if four deputies get elected, or seven, then whatever their boss may want them to do, they can do. And I, and I hear you, but that's the difference whether you got a job or you don't have a job sometime, if they can independently think, okay, so?
But if you follow that logic, then your assumption is that Trip Kester is only gonna do what the sheriff tells him to do. But Trip, uh, can think for himself.
Some people can, some people can't, when it comes to their livelihood, okay? Now, talking about Mr. Kester?
But that, that logic could go both ways, I wouldn't say Trip would ever do that, but you could also say that, you know, the, the sheriff is a constitutional officer, he is protected at will. And there was a, there was a case in the Fourth Circuit Court where a sheriff fired his deputy for political talk, which was, which was brought up, and the deputy sued the sheriff for a First Amendment right, and the Fourth Second, the Fourth Circuit Courts overruled it and said, you know what, the sheriff has that authority. So if anytime any of his deputies wear something wrong, talks politically like he doesn't want to, he is a constitutional sheriff, and he has that authority. If Trip was to make him mad, you could be gone. But if y'all had four up here that was serving with him, there's other constitutional things that the state of North Carolina has that said you can liquidate the sheriff's office and make a county police force, or you can hire a coroner and fire the sheriff. That's some stupid stuff right there, to even have to think about any of that. And, and we're at that point, so, uh, I would never say that, uh, Trip's a good godly man, um, the sheriff is, but there are some situations to where if people wanted to take advantage of certain powers, they could.
Oh, hundred percent, we see that in, uh, politics all the time, uh, but we're also dealing with hypotheticals.
So anyhow, the public better be aware of that?
Until it's not.
Because it's not hypothetical, okay, I mean?
It is hypothetical, there are no, not four officers serving on this board.
That's hypothetical, but there's other boards where there's multiple sheriff's deputies on the boards, okay? So that's not hypothetical.
And there's, there's plenty of other boards, and I know you always like to have the last word, but there are other boards out there that are made up of others beyond officers, and they engage in individual corruption or whatever, it's an individual matter. We will always have issues.
You're right, you're right. Um, okay, we have a, do I have a motion to excuse? He don't wanna excuse. Excuse Commissioner Elliott.
Motion to excuse Commissioner Elliott.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, my question is to you, Matt, and we're gonna go to questions now. Have you seen the list of slottings?
Yes.
Can I see your list, please, I wanna see if it matches mine?
This would be sergeants. Just wanna compare notes.
Now, this don't have the years of service, does this have the years of service here?
Uh, here's the big?
As the rest of the board, have you seen the list for slots?
Here's the one that Casey had sent out to the full board and that we discussed in the last meeting.
Okay, so one of my questions to you is, I see one on here thirty years' experience from a certain organization, another one thirty years. Um, do these people know what they were making when they was hired? Did they know their salary that was offered to them?
I would assume so.
Okay, so if they knew their salary that they was hired at, and they were okay with that salary, you still think, you know, we give somebody here, just, I'm gonna use an example, I'm not picking on anybody, okay? I don't even know if you're hearing the audience, but thirty years Highway Patrol. Do you think they was probably already paid for their experience at the Highway Patrol? Thirty years, so, if they had been there thirty years, do you think their pay level was up here somewhere?
Yeah, been hired.
So when they come here to go to work for the sheriff, you think the sheriff told them what he was gonna pay them? And they accepted that salary?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so that's the question I have, some of these folks, they already knew, they, they knew what they were making when they come here, okay? So now we're slotting, and if we was to open this up to the whole county like Commissioner Elliott had mentioned, we're talking possibly a million dollars or more.
Talking more than that.
More than that. So, um, Commissioner, I mean, Mr. Manager, what did you say? We had already, uh, the budget per year that the sheriff's department has increased? Now, I heard, I've heard all the bad things that we've done to them, uh, tonight, but what is the increase in his budget in the last?
Um, a few weeks ago? I had sent you guys something where I had, I had heard this as well in another meeting, um, and so I just real quickly went and grabbed all the budgets for the last ten years of the general fund versus the sheriff's office, and just put them on a quick spreadsheet, 'cause I, I gotta admit, I mean, I've worked here that whole duration, and I don't have all those numbers memorized in my head. Back in twenty fifteen, the general fund budget was a hundred and twenty-five point three million dollars, and the sheriff's office budget was fifteen point eight. Um, in twenty twenty, in FY twenty-six, the budget we just approved, the general fund was a hundred and seventy-eight point seven, and the sheriff's office is twenty-nine. That's, that's an eighty-three percent increase for the sheriff's office budget during that time versus a forty-three percent increase for the general fund. Um, just in the last handful of years since like, say, the turn of the decade, it's averaging about eight percent a year growth. Now, some of that's cars, some of that's equipment, contracts, that's the whole thing. Some of it's probably even adding, um, more SRO staff, but the bulk of it is just like every other county department, it is, it's more salaries, it's salary changes, and we think we mentioned at one of the meetings, I think it was the last meeting, where in twenty nineteen, we had an off-schedule budget presentation in here, where I remember going through all of you with the spreadsheets and walking through deputies, I didn't call any names out, where we had some, so we called it back then jumping. And you guys offered up, it was, it was about nine hundred thousand dollars to fix that problem that morning. Um, so that's in there as well, things like that, so staff we've added, we've added some jail staff over the years. Um, but the trajectory of spending is what I kinda, the reason why I sent it to you all is to see that, that budget's growing at twice the pace of the general fund. And we won't be able to, I think I used the word curtail, I think somebody spoke, I mean, Eddie spoke earlier about budget meetings where I have things to say about, oh, yeah, I have a lot of things to say about these meetings with all these departments. And you're gonna see something that, you know, you're gonna see times where we come up here where we have vouchers, again, as I spoke about twenty nineteen. It was me sitting in here, it was, not that you guys weren't involved, but it was me sitting here working with them to get the, now, that was a time where I felt strongly about that jumping around, that I did, and no offense to you guys, I didn't need your help vouching for it, does that make sense? I wanted to do it, I sat in a meeting with the sheriff and his key staff, and I looked at the spreadsheet, I said, this has got to be taken to the board and adjusted. Now, whether or not I could get y'all to do it or not, that's a whole different story. But I thought if you saw the problem the same way I saw it, you would, you would probably see it fixed the same way I did. Um, the slotting thing has come to me over the, I mean, we've been talking about this, actually, I look back at my emails from, since February of twenty-three. So we're working on two and a half years we've been discussing this topic. And, yeah, they've brought it to me, and I've not had a place where I felt like it could come to the board, where there were three obstacles in the way of doing that pay study in twenty twenty-two. And I've, I'm gonna summarize them, they've all been brought up in various forms, but let me summarize them. Time, PTRC was working on it in the winter of twenty twenty-two, and I wasn't seeing the results or the data forming out to where we can make sense of it, to where you guys could do, pull the trigger and do anything. I saw that in about Christmas of twenty-two, took the data over and decided I'm gonna wrangle it into the finish line myself. Not that y'all gave me a hard deadline, but there was, there was, let's just call it pressure, we need to get this done. And remember the concept of that, it wasn't to do comping and starting pays, it was to help people that had been working here get down the line. And so June was my kinda internal deadline to get that back to this board. So I had from January to June to kinda redo the whole study and get it in a format to get it back to you all, to, till you could see the, again, the problem that I saw. So I had a short timeline. Two, money. I hate to be the bearer always a proverbial wet blanket or et cetera, but it all comes back to, if we're not gonna increase tax rates, things have to fit in a box around here. And so we, we did, I felt like three and a half million, and, and you guys know how I work, I talked to all of you privately about issues that come on this agenda. And I'm not ashamed of that, that's called normal course of business. I am not putting stuff on this agenda where I watch four to three fights, or people tear each other to shreds trying to figure out how to do this. That was a big one. We landed on about three, I think it was three point seven. And I kinda knew then, I'm probably pushing the parameters of what I felt like I could get the board to see in terms of fixes. The last piece was the data for bringing the outside experience in. I have all the data if you worked here your whole career. I have data if you, I knew going forward at that point, if y'all approved the study, going forward, I'd have people come in one by one filling out applications, and I could deal with that. What I didn't have, Mr. Chairman, was the prior. Bringing it from some, now, the sheriff's done his people, but I knew, at that time, I didn't have that in that pay study in twenty twenty-two. But I then knew there was a bunch of these people probably in other departments. I pulled a report since then, and kinda filtered it for twenty twenty-two in the summer, as in my dividing line, and I came up with about, I'm just rounding here, about four hundred and fifty folks. What that tells me is we got about a thousand working here. That means five hundred and fifty, basically, have flipped. We flipped this organization over fifty percent, does that make sense? In due time, things would go on, and we talked about that when we gave you the pay study, I told you, I said, that's a fa- that's one fault of this study, and every study that anybody brings to you's gonna have some issues with it, and that one was the one. Where I could not tell you confidently how many people there were out of those hundreds that were bringing experience from other places, and how much that would cost. Because it ain't the two percent, it's not two percent times a number to say, oh, the cost is gonna be round about this amount. Everybody's slotting number, as you've seen from those spreadsheets, and the three that were kinda in the committee really saw it, it's a different number because everybody's years of experience are different. So let's say the average is five thousand dollars a person, which some people could be five figures, some people could be fifteen hundred dollars. And let's say there's a hundred people, I don't know, that's, that's the problem, I don't li- I have never liked walking into this room and looking at seven y'all and go, I don't know. I don't have a plan because I have no idea how many and how much. Matter of fact, those of you that worked with me for eleven years know I've never done that. And I don't really wanna start now, so that was kinda my reason for not bringing it forward, but you take that, say there's a hundred people times that many, yeah, you could be at another, another set of dollar amounts in addition to doing this. I hate to give you a long answer, Mr. Chairman, I just think it all kinda couples together, um, gets a little bit lost in translation as I hear people come in and talk. Um, I'm not saying that to be mean, I mean, but it's been three years we've been talking about it, people forget certain facts has gotten said, et cetera. So, but that's how I got here, is those three things were missing, and we've always said that it, to go back in time, we could do it, it's just the cost is a little unknown, the quantity's a little unknown, and I'll be honest with you, the process for capturing that be a little, little tough, I think, possibly. We, we're not gonna be able to go through everybody's orbit cards and things like that, you know what I'm saying? We have to treat them like we do fix people that come in, it's just kind of, give me your information and tell me, it's the honor system. It's the trust but verify, I don't have, I don't know of no way to do it. Now, one caveat, when the committee, you three gentlemen, remember, you got, and you got, you got little sub issues coming out of this bigger issue. When you guys sat and looked at that data, if you remember, I brought it to you and, and I chopped it into two pieces. There were people who didn't get slotting at all consideration, Mr. Kester's one of them. As best I can tell, going through his file, I see no evidence that he received any credit from coming from foresight. But then there was a second, it was about half of them, if you remember, it was almost fifty-fifty split, about half of them did receive something. It was just under a old way of doing business. And that gets even more squirrely in terms of, they did, they just didn't get, it was old. It's not the new percentages we're using as of twenty twenty-two, so the slotting gets even more, uh, layered and nuanced and complex to deal with when you start phrasing it like that. Um, again, I'm not trying to dissuade anybody from doing it, four votes to do it, we're gonna make it happen, but I'm saying those were the reasons why Casey didn't come in here gung-ho with that piece of that fix initially in twenty twenty-two. I wanted to get it, I wanted to get going with the three and a half and get the people, and I think we even said in this room, if you worked here your whole career, 'cause I remember saying this right behind that podium, I did it up there, if you worked here your whole career, like say Mr. Elliott had worked here, you're gonna get a harder nudge down the pay grade line than if you had come in from somewhere else, does that make sense? And I think we all were comfortable with, yeah, if you've worked here your whole career, you probably were owed, you owed your due. Um, and so, and then again, going forward, we knew it was self-correct. I don't, again, I'm not saying that to be Darwinian or anything like that, it's just how it's kind of, I, it's just a fact. It will fix, and you'll be in a new pay plan that you can, and I'm confident now from looking at our vacancy rates versus other people. I don't have, I don't have data to prove this, it's just my gut telling me. As an organization, we're running probably slightly less than ten percent vacancies, or we was last March, if you remember, I always bring them to you in March. Now, I got it, that's six months ago. I could pull them again, well, we'd know, but we, we were hovering right around like nineish. The bulk of that's, let me finish this piece, that bulk of that's DSS. You folks on the DSS board know that. A little bit in the sheriff's office, but the bulk of it is, is, and a little bit in, in EMS, but the bulk of it's DSS. If we didn't, I'm confident, if we did not do that twenty twenty-two push to get people off the bottom of the pay grade, those of y'all that worked... to get people off the bottom of the pay grade, those of y'all that worked here your whole lives know, back in the day, when you got brought in, you got brought in with the minimum, there was no negotiating, period. You didn't talk to anybody, you didn't call HR, you didn't negotiate with your supervisor. It was take the minimum, because you couldn't, because if you did, you jumped everybody in line, right? When we pushed them people this way and the pay grade minimums here, we made just a, just enough room to have negotiations with new people. And I'm confident, Mr. Chairman, that's what's made us at nine percent vacancy rate in the county versus fifteen or whatever the number could be. It's helped us out in, in this time where labor is a battle with, of, with everybody. It's a, it's a big problem. Being sorry for the long answer, Mr. Elliott, sorry to jump in the middle there.
Is it okay with the board if I ask a question?
Uh, if it's anything pertaining to this, I don't think you can.
No.
Another quick question from Mr. Mazzaro, do you know what the most expensive raise on this sheet is? Slotting?
Is it one of the lieutenants?
No, I'm just asking you the amount, how much is the largest amount of raise? So you don't know what that is, or?
Well, you took my sheet.
No, okay, well, I thought, I already had mine in my mind, so. Do you know what the largest raise is?
Well, the one I've got here is for sergeants, so it looks like there's an eight thousand eight hundred and seventy seven raise. Do you have a higher one?
Yeah, ten thousand one hundred and twenty seven.
For how many years?
Is one, uh, ten years. No, I'm sorry, sixteen years, but anyhow, that's what I just wondered, if you knew, some, some, there's ten thousand dollars raises here, there's eight thousand dollar raises. So how the, all this got started off, you wasn't on the committee, right?
Right.
So Mr. Tripp, Mr. Shell, myself was on the committee. The sheriff come to me a couple of times and wanted these people slotted in, these thirty six people, okay? So we went in the room back here during one of our committee meetings and we looked at it and said, you know, so these some pretty good raises here, you know, and then, and again, the question come up, do these folks know what they was making when they come here? Seemed like everybody didn't know what they was making. So that's how we kind of got veered off to the two percent, to the deputy one-twos and threes, okay? And that was never a request of the sheriff for anybody other than this right here, this list, okay? So that's how this has morphed into, now let's do the slotting and the two percent for everybody, you know? But it started off as, uh, we probably don't wanna do the slotting. And then what we do wanna do though is give it to, to the deputy one-two and threes and the jailers, okay? So that's kind of how we come out of that meeting, is that right, Mr. Shell? And, uh, so anyhow, then it's ballooned into this, okay? So just to give you a little bit of update of, of what it was, so anyhow, uh, we will go on to your motion and your second and any other discussion.
Well, I think at the time, Tripp and I agreed that it would be beneficial to the sheriff to have the tool in place for recruitment. And by raising the beginning salary on the one-twos and threes, the people out there that work swing shifts, they're your workers. It's not the ones that retire from the highway patrol for thirty, with thirty years of experience, it's already been compensated through their retirement package and wants to make higher dollars now, so when they quit, they get more money from social security. That's the reason I don't like slotting, sure, it's not fair to the, to the people on the ground working these swing shifts. And, and these are your, this is your bread and butter right there on, in those patrol cars, that's your bread and butter. And eventually, if we overlook those people, that's, you're gonna lose more and more and more of them. And, 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 and I'm, I'm not saying you do that, I'm just saying we gotta be careful not to do that. And that's the reason I, I oppose slotting, I just don't agree with it.
I'd, I'd like to say.
It's not fair, it's not fair to the.
I don't, I don't, I don't think it either, either. You know, we've had this pay discussion over and over again. And you think about last week and, or the last time we had this discussion, feelings were hurt, voices were raised. Tonight, uh, we're speaking again, tonight we were berated about how, how terrible we have been for years not giving raises. And then we have an eight percent overall budget for all these years. And, um, I still believe after that vote where we talked about up two up lieutenants, you know, getting a raise and this two percent and, um.
It was voted down?
And, yes, yes, it was voted down. And so I still think the sliding plan is not a good idea. I still think there's a valid argument about the four biggest uh, departments here not receiving the same type of opportunity, you know? And, and the, the, you know, the morale that comes along with that. And, and be trying to be equitable as equitable as we can be, is what Casey I think was talking about. As equitable as we can possibly be. That's the kind of been our philosophy, uh, for years and how we treat our employees.
I'd like to follow up on that one thing, Mr. Tripp. The sheriff department has received a higher raise than ever in the history of Davidson County. And you got officers that wanna stand up here and attack us? And we're the reason that the sheriff department has received those raises, it's not fair. It's not right. Anything you've wanted, sheriff, we've gave, it's not right. But if we fall back on one little thing, we are attacked like that? That's not right. That's just not right. And to say that you've only received a one percent raise, look at your starting salary compared to what you make now and tell me how you got there without having a raise. Honest, let's just be honest with the public out here. Same, you're not the only one, other people have said the same thing and it's not right.
I, I wish I could remember all the times in, in my, you know, short tenure as a, a commissioner, that after the budget was, was given, and y'all help me remember this. After the budget was given, the sheriff's department would come and ask us for a lot of things, you know, small things, you know? Granted, might be equipment, might be this, might be that. And we most of the time have, have said, over the course of my tenure, I'm, where I'm speaking from, I feel like we've said yes in many, many cases. So, um, I just, I just think, I think we're making a, making a mistake. They're getting up, I, I like what you said, you're, they're getting a five percent raise, they're getting the.
And if we go, if we were, we have went with the two percent, which y'all suggested, that means seven percent.
Seven per, yes.
Yeah, and on the lower rank, it's actually above seven percent.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that's a pretty good raise.
And, and we, I, you know, I think sometimes, and, and the sheriff comes to us and says, you know, I'm worried about retention, I'm worried about retention. Retention to the lower level is definitely a place where it needs to be, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
And, and if we can get them here with a fairly decent, maybe they'll stay a little bit longer and make a career, you know? And we, we can't always say that all these other people around us are gonna take them away from us, you know? It seems to be a revolving door that, you know, constantly works toward that way.
If you look at Guilford County, Guilford County spent millions of dollars on incentive programs, on different programs to try to keep their personnel. And now they're, they're finding that it doesn't know good, they're just as bad as everybody else after spending all that money.
That's right.
And it's like the dog chasing his tail, I said that. We raise our salary to, to match Rowan, for example, next year they're gonna raise theirs. We're gonna be back at square one again. Eventually, somebody's gonna have to wake up on governing boards and say, enough's enough, you know? We can't do no more without hitting the taxpayer more in the pocket. And I don't think anybody wants to hit the taxpayer more in the pocket. Especially in these day and times when they can't even buy groceries.
So all, all points well taken, I would say that, one, that this, this board as a whole has been very pro law enforcement. So I will say that, every single one of you. Those on the committee, Commissioner Shell, Commissioner Yates, Kestner, right, they came up with the additional two percent. Again, this is pro law enforcement, I guess where I was going, Steve, was with your motion, was to take exactly what you had, the two percent, do that, and because the difference, 'cause we're, we're just talking about law enforcement here. The difference between the two was only a hundred and ninety three thousand dollars. That's where I was going with, we might as well tackle the slotting piece when the difference is so, the difference is so small. And that is a small number relative to the budget as a whole, that's where I was coming from. And Todd, to your point on, they, they knew the, the salary, agreed, they, they agreed to it, they signed up. I, I would say I would be concerned if I agreed to my salary and then there was a pay study and my experience, or people who came in after me got an adjustment in pay, from their experience where, and I was not grandfathered in. But I, I hear your point, they, they were aware of it. All I'm saying is it's, it's a small, very small piece of the pie to, to fix this, this issue.
Something, something else I wanted to add. I remember distinctly, the last time we studied this, there was a lot of facts and figures kicked around, which facts and figures are good, it helps us have strategic information to make decisions on.
Which more boards would do that, you know?
Right, and I think at that time, there was some discussion about, Mr. Chairman, I think you mentioned that if the sheriff, you know, we were kind of justifying, looking at different agencies and crimes closed and different things. And at that time, there was some discussion about some of the information from our agency hadn't been put into that database to, to give us the proper data to compare to other agencies. Well, I think since then, from what I've seen, some of that data has been entered, and I think the sheriff's got some pretty good information that would.
If he wants to email that to us, we'll take a look at it, but if, if he don't have anything to compare it to, other than just y'all's, we gotta have something to compare it to, whether it be whatever counties, but have him to email it to Casey, 'cause I've spent quite a bit of time, you know, on the SBI, and whatever the information is, it's what, what Davidson County Sheriff's Department has put in there, okay? Now again, well, we'll, you just email it to us if you don't mind, 'cause we got a, we got a motion here. Sheriff, you told me at my restaurant, you was here to fight this out with me in the street, okay? I remember what you told me, and, you know.
I was about to do what?
You, you was ready to fight this out in the street if I didn't give you your slotting, that's where all this went, that's where it's all come from.
I'm not a very violent person.
Well, no, you said, you said we'll fight it out in the public is what you told me, so, well, however the public wants to take that, that's okay. But again, Casey's already described what he's, what we've gave you in the budget. Every year, your budget has been way above everybody else's since twenty eighteen, so we have a motion on the floor in a second, thank you very much.
But lots been said about my personality, about my character and everything, I'd love to defend myself.
I told you, if you will, just email it to us, is that fair with the board, just email it, 'cause we gotta.
It's not fair to speak about me and not let me speak back, Mr. Shell, um, or any of the three right in the middle.
If I say anything to offend you, I apologize, that, that was not my intention.
It's not factual. Nor were the stats or anything else, because I got a letter from the SBI. A lot of things have been said about me from you.
Can, can you, can you give Casey a copy of that letter? And, and let me just, and I get it.
I don't have to email, I'll give you a copy of it now with the true stats that we were able to get in because we couldn't because of flex. We just got a letter from SBI this week, or last week, that we had this information, now we can give it to you. You also said I've not, as a sheriff, I've never, I've never complied with the SBI. I have facts right here that I did each year.
You've never, you've never complied with them, is that?
I've never given them the stats, you said that.
No, I, I said in twenty nineteen, early twenty nineteen, there was some missing, there was some missing, uh, numbers there. So I have the statistics here from twenty eighteen on, but in early twenty nineteen, uh, it shows that, it looks like there was about six months missing or whatever, but that was on the federal website.
Got them all, it's twenty twenty three when we changed our, our flex program.
But this is going from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty three, that's all the SBI has in, in their records, so.
They have twenty four, but they take a year to get it out.
Right, right.
They have it all, which, you know, there was some conflict about, 'cause I couldn't do it, Lexington couldn't do it either, 'cause we changed the flex program. So, so there's a lot of information there that shows us, and we were compared to Rowan County, if you see the facts, and this all comes from the SBI.
But are these statistics good through twenty twenty three? Have you looked at them, are they good?
They are, and we're.
These are really the statistics I were looking at, because again, in twenty eighteen, it looked like rape was solved in twenty eighteen at fifty two point nine percent. In twenty twenty three, rape was solved, or not solved, uh, percent cleared at fourteen percent. So that's what I'm going by, is what is on the SBI website.
Well, there's a lot said about property crimes, there's property crimes in there, we do solve property crimes. In fact, um, if you look at the state average, it's thirteen percent, ours is twenty one when it was said we're under ten percent, not true. When they get their total facts.
Look, rape fifty two, down to fourteen point three percent, is that the same number as you have?
I have it all right here, I'll go through each one if you want me to, from, from anything, any violent crime, ours is.
Alright, rape, rape, in twenty eighteen, the SBI has.
Twenty eighteen, I wasn't here.
I know, that was the last sheriff, so I'm comparing it to the last sheriff. That's a good comparison, I mean, it's, that's, that's the year it, this is what SBI's got on their website, twenty eighteen till, till twenty twenty three. So I can't go back prior to that, or I can't go, I can't go past twenty twenty three. So those are the only numbers that I could look at, okay? So in twenty eighteen, the percentage of rape cases cleared was fifty two point nine percent. In twenty twenty three, the percentage of rape cases cleared, fourteen point three percent.
So in twenty nineteen was thirty three point, let's go ahead and, we're gonna talk about five here, let's go ahead and talk about all of it. Y'all have to jump around and pick whatever stats you want, 'cause that seems to be what happened.
Okay, the year before.
So let's go ahead and talk, in twenty nineteen was thirty three point three percent. So in twenty twenty, fifty seven point ten, let's, let's cover it all instead of jumping around.
Let, wait, hold, let me just a minute.
So in twenty twenty one.
Listen, if you want us to treat you with respect, you treat us with respect.
I'm trying to.
Quit yelling at us.
I'm not yelling, but it seems, it seems that I want to talk about, let's talk about stats. We're jumping around from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty three, let's cover everything in between.
Before we're wrong, that's okay.
From the state SBI, so let's don't jump around.
But the sheriff is, he's talking to us, I mean, do you mind if he continues to?
No, I, I don't have a mind, I, I don't mind, but I'm saying, let's go down the list, you've got the list, you've already said it, you got it from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty three. Let's cover every year in between, because as we all know, it changes.
We can do that, we can do that.
And it's gonna make us look good, because you look at the grand total of things on the back of violent crimes. We were number one through nineteen through twenty three and much above the state average, state average of twenty seven percent. And we used Rowan County that day, we've got Rowan County's results as well, and we will surpass Rowan County.
Okay, let's go to robbery, that's the next one on the list, robbery, in twenty eighteen, it was sixty one percent cleared. Twenty nineteen, thirty two percent cleared, I'm gonna go down the years as Mr. Craven wanted me to do. Uh, robbery in twenty twenty was thirty percent, robbery in twenty twenty one was thirty one percent, robbery in twenty twenty two was twenty nine percent, robbery in twenty twenty three was thirty. So again, that's half of what it was in twenty eighteen, sixty percent in twenty eighteen, thirty percent in twenty twenty three. So I just went down this list, this is all I can do, Sheriff, the people elected me like they elect you to look, and, and this is what I had on there. Now I will compare this to this and see, yeah, that was a year, that was, you said something about murders the other day. And I agree with you, I've seen the, the mishap in numbers here, I don't know why, the numbers is wrong. In twenty eighteen, uh, eighty three point three percent clear, okay?
Let's go back and, you know, if we're gonna compare apples, the apples go on from, from the moment that he became sheriff using twenty eighteen, which I get a little bit of eighteen myself.
That's the only thing that I can compare to, like I said, because the SBI only goes to twenty eighteen to now. So I didn't have any option of going to twenty seventeen or twenty sixteen. I wanna give you that credit because I didn't have, uh, that stuff on the SBI website, it's easy to get to from twenty eighteen to, to twenty twenty three. But anyhow, I'm not here to talk about that, I'm just saying, these are the statistics, and again. And again, people elect me just like they elect you, okay?
And our statistics are, are very good, but you did make the statement that I wasn't reporting. I hadn't since I've been the sheriff.
No, I did, I didn't.
Always recorded. I can bring it to you.
Well, if I did, I misspoke on that point, okay?
I would like an apology for that.
But I, I'm sorry if that's what I said. Now, it may have been misinterpreted, but if I said that, I apologize, because that was, I knew you'd put some information in there, because it was, it was right here.
Is I could digitally get it to the SBI.
But I, I did see something on the federal website that showed for a little while in twenty nineteen, there was a period there that there was no information put in. But again, I'd have to try to weed back through there. I ain't saying y'all didn't do it. I didn't say, Sheriff, y'all done it, okay? I'm just saying somewhere along the line, I seen that, and I can't get back there. But anyhow, again, I apologize if you took it wrong, but these are the statistics I gotta look at, you know?
From the FBI. We don't report to the FBI. We report to the SBI.
They have a federal site too, that I guess the SBI turns their stuff into. It's a federal site, so.
Uniform crime records.
Uniform crime.
What does cleared mean? What, what does declared mean on this?
Declared.
Uh, cleared.
Cleared?
Yeah.
That is where.
Solved crime, like done, okay, gotcha.
And you know, burglary, twenty eighteen, uh, twenty-four percent. Twenty twenty-three, twenty percent, not far off, but, but close. And, and what I look at too, is the amount, now something happened here in twenty eighteen, because there's eleven hundred and seventy-three, um, actual offenses, and in twenty nineteen, they dropped to five hundred and seventy-eight. So I don't know if there's a reason there why that number dropped in half. Again, it may be a different inner reporting. I try to look at all those numbers. Sheriff, I'm not here to beat up on you. I'm not here to do anything. I'm just a numbers guy. And again, the people elected me. I'm a business guy. I look at numbers. You know, this ain't nothing personal with you. I told you that the other week.
We've been here, it's been a not, it's been like a ambush or something. I'm very proud of our agency.
Wasn't trying to be an ambush.
We, we talk about the people I hire. Be glad I can get people to come in and work these schools. You've got some of the best protection in these state troopers that work there. I don't, I, I don't play favorites to anybody. I fight for all my people, and they know it. And I will always do that, uh, whether the first day they're there, they've been there, to Eddie Curry. I treat my people equally and fairly, and nobody looks after their people. Nobody gets involved like this sheriff does with their people. If I cause my people to go into hell, I'm gonna be in hell basket with them going into it, and they just said it tonight. Um, down in Denton, I was there when it broke off, and it, it was a very scary time. But it, but, you know, I'm not saying that you're not good to us, and especially, I appreciate you bringing, you, you two and, and Fred, y'all voted for it last time. We need this money, and it shouldn't be penalized. That sounds like the most liberal comment I've ever said. You've been, you've been successful in one job. You shouldn't make anymore. I'm glad we don't do that to you, Mr. Yates, because I'm sure you're doing better today than you did three years ago or four years ago. Because, you know, should we penalize you for doing better? No, that's, that's a, that's a more conservative way. But it don't make any sense to penalize people for succeeding and continuing on. Just because you're fifty doesn't mean you stop. I've been, I'm sixty years old, thirty-nine years in this business, and I'm gonna keep on. I've still got a lot of good left in me for this county, but all I care about's the county. And I care about all the employees. I think we should. I think you said it. Mr. Elliott, we should do it for all of the employees. If all of them are being slotted, we should fix it for everyone. The county got back five point two million dollars last year out of everybody's budget, which we gave some of that back. We didn't spend every penny that we were slotted. We gave some back. We, we try to be smart with our money. We don't waste money in this county. We take care of things, but we wanna take care of our people as well. Now I just wanna get it straight, because the last two times, we got kinda beat up on it, and I had no statistics, because I couldn't report for the twenty-three because of the flex system. We changed the, we changed the whole system that needed changing. It hadn't been changed in twenty-three years, and we did it. I'm honest. I'm transparent, and I do everything by the book. And that's the way I'm gonna continue to do it. I, I know you can twist numbers if you want to. I choose not to.
Yeah, and Sheriff, just so you know now, I, I didn't twist numbers. These was right off this, uh, sa- uh, the SBI website. So I've not twisted any numbers. This is the actual printout right off the website, so. Nobody was here to try to intentionally twist any numbers, and I didn't do so. I, I quoted everything off of, uh.
Well, I come in here, I come in here wanting to talk about pay the first time, and I got bombarded with stats. I come prepared, just like you told me to come.
Casey was just giving some stats about Rowan County, the size of it. And again, like, like Commissioner, um, Mazel said earlier, we gotta compare numbers. And look, we're just not here to throw money away. Look what happened to Forsyth County School System when that happened, and look what happened, uh.
I even do it with less. Rowan County's got more officers per one thousand. We've got less than one deputy per one thousand. So I can do it with less. I can do a better job than Rowan County, and I can do it with less people.
Is that, um, okay, well, we won't.
Oh, we can get into, I've got it all. I've got it all.
We'll, we'll say that for a Thursday morning when we got a bunch of time.
I come prepared. You told me to from then on. I listen.
But if you've emailed that to Casey, we'll look it over and, and good. One other question I do have for you. Rowan County's overtime's not nearly as high as yours. They're about a third of your overtime, so can you kindly?
I can explain my overtime. When I'm twenty to twenty-five people short, I've gotta have people to work. I have people come in. Let me answer. Don't cut me off.
You go right ahead.
All right. Um, when I've gotta have people to work, I have to have people to work. I have to have them to say they'll work. And sometimes it's a lieutenant, sometimes it's a corporal, sometimes it's a deputy one. It doesn't matter. But if you take the money, if you take the, just a forty-five thousand dollar salary, which that's just on the average, and you multiply that by twenty, that's, and, and you add in the FICA, and you add in all, everything that's there, you're looking at about one point two million dollars right there. Um, we do some special things when, when the, uh, when the takeovers for the cars came in our county. You know, it come across the United States, come into Charlotte, come into all these places and just wore them out. Come into Davidson County, and we stopped it. Go ask anybody in Wahlburg and find out if we didn't do it. It took me a month of putting some overtime people up there. I had to get people to go to work, but we stopped it. We even changed the law, and you don't have that stuff happening in this county anymore. They may do it in others, and we've been called to go to Virginia Beach, we've been, to tell them how to do this. We've been to Fayetteville to help them with it. We, we set a precedence in this county. When they come in this county, there's special things to be done. We've stuck, we've shut down every sweepstakes place in the county. This is the things that take for drug operations and things. We, we do the, we have, it takes a little overtime. When it, five o'clock hits, we don't get to go home.
So you said about people now, their vacancy rate's about the same as yours, so. Rowan County's, they don't have any, very few, uh, their vacancy rate's like seven and a half, and ours is nine. So it's not like you're looking for a lot more people than they are, so. Your vacancy rate's pretty close to the same, so. Anyhow, you might wanna look at that overtime, and we can talk about that later, because that overtime is a big hitter here in the county, so.
It must have been, y'all approved the budget. Y'all put it in my budget. So, I mean, it's approved, it's approved salaries to get these people to come to work. And I have to cover the positions that's not covered, so, you know, y'all put it in my budget. I didn't spend it all.
So if you're paying these deputies overtime, two, right, deputy one, two, and three, this average is about sixty-five hundred dollars maybe per head? So you think with the overtime, they probably are making more than what they would in surrounding counties?
I don't know. I don't know. I mean.
Well, you, you seen Casey's, uh, you seen Casey's statistics from Rowan County to where it looked like we were probably paying more than Rowan, just in a different format, but just saying, keep that in mind, because their vacancy rate's about the same, but we gonna move on. We gotta vote here.
You asked about the overtime, so, you talked about, there, are they making more money? So what we're asking our folks to do, and trying to be calm, I understand. I wasn't trying to be rude. I'm gonna try to be calm. So we're gonna ask them to take a, just to make that extra money, to work a hundred and ninety-five extra hours.
Hmm.
Away from their families, just to make that extra money. I've got it, yeah. It's a hundred and ninety-five hours.
Tell, tell me, how would they have to work a hundred and ninety-five?
Make that extra money.
To make the amount you just said.
The two, the, the fif- the fifty, sixty-five hundred?
Yeah, sixty-five, yeah.
They have to work that much.
They, they need to work an extra hundred and ninety-five hours away from their family.
So they was already making forty, forty, listen to this, though, Chris, that's not true. Forty-five thousand, forty-six thousand is what we were paying. Forty-seven's what Rowan County was paying, correct, Casey? Is that about the right numbers, more or less?
They moved up to forty-nine and some change.
And we moved up to forty-seven and something and some change.
If the two percent goes, it's like forty-seven, two, three.
But we're forty-six something now, so if you add fifty-six, but majority of our money, majority of theirs.
They do part of the time in the jail.
We doing comp, but they're only doing comp time at four eighty or two forty?
I can't answer that.
We've done talked about this over and over and over and over, okay?
You brought up the overtime and working, that they make that money, and I had that, the information.
But they, they spend all their money in the jail over there. We spend all of our money in, in patrol over here, so. But anyhow, I got another idea for a little while later, but thank y'all very much. We got a motion on the table in a second. Um, any other questions?
I, I didn't hear the question.
The motion was.
To incre- include the sergeants, lieutenants in the slotting, the two percent.
Motion, lieutenants in the slotting and two percent.
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna vote, but I'm not gonna be included in the pay increase.
I don't agree with that, but I wish she was on the list. That ain't fair to him, but I can't talk.
Super quick statement, Mr. Chairman. I, uh, I stamped at you earlier, and I apologize.
Oh, that's okay, that's okay.
I know we're, we're used to that. That's the, I know, but if we can't have a, a nice, calm dialogue, then citizens suffer, and that's not my style.
You're good.
I, and I agree with that, and I'd like to add to that, that just because somebody disagrees don't make them your enemy.
You're not my enemy at all.
Ninety-nine percent of our things we agree on, and you got one percent we, we go head to head on it. It's just because we have different ways of seeing things, but, but it don't make us enemies.
That's right.
Amen.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second for the slotting and the two percent.
Right.
Alright.
Why can't we not use the figures for law enforcement, and we have to get something for five, for one point something million to a hundred thousand?
What's that now? I don't quite understand.
Say it again.
Yeah.
Say that again.
How much difference is it between the slotted and the non-slotted?
Right here. About a hundred ninety-three thousand.
Yeah, and somebody was saying that if you actually did that, it was much more than that. It was upwards of a million dollars.
If you slot for the rest of the county, if you do it for one department, you gotta do it for.
That's not exactly right, because we have been involved in, as a matter of fact, somebody brought it up here tonight. Uh, we have been involved in departments where, uh, we needed to have somebody come in, and we popped somebody up, um, for amount that we did not give them, um, a corporate, a, a corporate, um, amount of money. In other words, we've already picked and chose some of the people that we have put in, and we haven't gone to everybody and done it.
I think that would be micromanaging, and we don't do that.
Well, you're doing it now.
That would be the director, I, no, we're at the request of the sheriff.
You're doing it now.
No, we're not. That's at the request of the sheriff. Now we have to either prove.
Now we're talking about.
We have to either prove it or disprove it. I mean, or, or object to it.
I know that.
Okay, well, go on, go on before you get yourself all bent out of shape. Go on.
Well, we wouldn't want you to be up there.
Well, I don't wanna be upset either.
Alright, so we have.
I just wanted to know, we, we're talking about a different hundred and something thousand dollars. And if we keep it at that number, it seems reasonable, uh, to go ahead and have it, um, to put in place. But we have done many times, uh, with other counties, not only with individuals in other counties, but with people in other counties, and, and, uh, we didn't, we didn't do it for everybody in the county.
I mean, to me, that'd be the only fair way to do it, if you're gonna do something like that, and then slotting, like I say, you gotta take everybody's word for it. The sheriff does have paperwork with his folks. I don't know what it's called, but you do.
That orbit report.
Orbit report, but everybody else in the county, they come up and say, I had thirty years at so-and-so, and, you know, I guess we could call and try, and call somebody out west if they, uh, we had two employees today, one from Illinois and one from Missouri in DSS, so. I guess we'd be on the phone, or Casey would, trying to call them and get their.
Well, let, let me pause this question. I mean, we're specifically looking at one agency right now. I know y'all had mentioned earlier, y'all are on the DSS board. There's been, you know, the, the emergency operators. They've, they've been already included. I don't think everybody in the county's gonna realize and, and expect for all this to just happen overnight. I mean, you can do it incrementally, and we can do part of it now, and then budget part of it, and let them know that, hey, we're working towards this, but it can't all happen at the same time, because the county can't afford it, but we are gonna work towards that.
Um, okay.
Yeah, that does make the question, though, which one should we start with? DSS, they have the highest.
Or, or the sheriff? Do we stop here and go to them?
They've already done it. Have they already done it? No, no.
I didn't think that.
Which ones have we done?
We ain't slotted anybody, did I know?
I ain't talking about slot. I'm talking about.
That's what we're talking about.
What we're talking about.
That's what we were talking about, the slot.
Please don't interrupt. If you don't mind.
Fred, you can misunderstand.
No, I don't. We do misunderstand.
Alright, somebody called a question, please.
We were talking about slot. That's what we were discussing.
You not understanding what I'm saying, but I appreciate that.
Somebody called a question.
What I'm saying is.
Call the question.
Alright, we're gonna vote. Motion and a second.
Wait a minute.
There's a call to question here, so it's gotta roll.
You can't.
We can't?
No. How much time are you given for discussion?
It's funny, when you were chairman, you didn't recognize that.
Just, just the one other.
You've called a question, Sheriff.
One other.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm gonna let you, but go ahead.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it. I know, in the years that I have been here, that the battle has been almost annual to get, um, to get our law enforcement where it needs to be, to where, we're not catching up. It seems like every time we do it, we said, well, we're almost there. We're raising it to this much, and, and we'll be close, but we're not gonna be there. And I, I can appreciate what, um, Commissioner Shell's saying about people raising their other stuff, but I think that we oughta lead sometime instead of follow. That's just my opinion, and that's all I got to say.
Have, have you looked at these salaries here, Mr. McClure?
Yes, I have.
You have? Okay, you might wanna look at them again. Not bad wages for Davidson County, better than the average wage here, so.
Okay.
Um, so, okay, we have a call to question here. Um, we have a motion and a second.
Quick question.
Nah, it's, it's, let's go. Let's vote and get this rolling.
Okay.
Motion and a second.
Can I, can I repeat their motion and their second?
Your motion, please.
Motion. I, I would be willing to amend my motion to say, just include the pay for the lieutenants and sergeants and move out the slotting.
So just do the two percent?
Just do the two percent, and include the sergeants and lieutenants without the slotting.
If.
If y'all will be in order to that.
If you're gonna, the motion's on the fourth. You're gonna vote on it, or you, or you have to withdraw your motion.
Got you.
Is that correct?
Yeah, that's right.
Can you withdraw it? I didn't know.
He can amend it.
I think he can amend it.
He can amend.
Yeah, motion.
He can amend it. That's what I was suggesting, just amend the motion.
My understanding that you could amend anything as long as it wasn't, um, approved. Once it's approved, had been affected, then approval is not one of the, um, avenues that you have. I'm taking on that. I'm not sure.
If it's another tie vote, then this one fails too.
So you're talking about the two eighty-seven trip?
Correct.
Okay.
So I have another idea too, so, but we need a motion for yours. Then either, either it'll go up and down, and then I can bring what I had thought about, and whether it's any good or not, I don't know, but.
It would seem to me that the person making the motion had, would have the option of listening to your, your opinion before, and then a second, and then we could vote on it.
Well, if he, if he's already got his motion, I mean, he already, he's got a motion on the floor, so.
I second that.
I, I second it.
Yeah.
It made.
But his motion was to amend the motion, right?
Correct.
To just add the two percent.
Add the two percent without the slotting.
The motion is something that's, that's, uh, to be voted on. Has to be the motion that was made first.
That's right.
Okay, I'm an amended one.
But he.
But you're right, and then he's got amended, yep. So the first vote's gotta go.
That's gotta go, okay, okay.
Is that right?
No, no, I think he, he can, he can amend it.
But it was already seconded, it was already seconded. What Fred was saying.
After discussion, you can still amend it.
At the end of the discussion.
Right, you can still, you can still have a.
It's been a common practice.
Okay, yeah, that's true, that's true.
We've done, we've done that forever.
I, I'm sorry, you know, we're just trying to wade through this, so. All right, so you wanna amend yours just for the two percent?
We've done it forever, Fred.
All right.
Seconded.
And he's seconded.
We have a discussion period, and if you wanna discuss your ideas now, it's time to do it.
Okay, um.
Before we vote.
We still have to, well, no, you can discuss, more discussion, and then.
What, um, Sheriff, give me, uh, how many patoons or, uh, patrols, the jail and the patrols, how many is a, what do you call those squadrons?
Squads.
So you have four squads for the jail, and four squads for patrol.
Mm-hmm.
How many peoples on, on those squadrons?
Have ten on the, for patrol.
Ten per squadron?
Per squad on patrol.
So that'd be forty for the jail, and forty?
That's patrol, and, and forty for the jail.
Forty for the jail.
And then there's other positions in the, in the jail, it's like those squads, but, you know, they have to do different, you know, medical and, and different things, it's part of the jail.
So how, how many people would you say that was on the squ- uh, the whole squadron for the jail and, uh, the patrol?
Jail, we got.
Eighty?
For the, the whole jail is fifty-one.
Fifty-one?
Fifty-one detention officers.
They're on rotation, right? Is, is everybody on rotation?
Oh, fifty-one of them, that includes, that includes the admin staff as well. To remove the, uh, two admin positions, you're looking at forty-nine.
Forty-nine people on rotation?
That's forty-nine in the jail.
Yeah, how, how many on rotation? I guess rotation is.
When you're talking about rotation, or, or squads rotate, um, and that would be forty people that rotate. Now, in the jail's different than patrol, 'cause patrol rotates day and nights every two weeks. The jail's different, we've done something different to try to retain people. We have one squad to straight day, one squad straight nights, and two squads that's rotating, that tends to work well. With the jail schedule and atmosphere, but patrol is hard to do that.
My thought process was give your rotation squadron, people just rotating, I'm gonna call that, the people in patrol cars for sure, and the people in the jail, and it's, and it's starting too. I guess this would be your starting deputies would be on rotation, and several, uh, and I, and I, I noticed this from Rowan County, they had like a stipend, a yearly stipend. So Casey, what would like a twenty-five-hundred-dollar stipend for eighty people on rotation, is that right?
Excuse me, what?
Eighty people on rotation, is that right?
Yes.
Eighty? Whether it be in the jail, whether it's day or night rotation or whatever, so.
That's working on squads.
Squads, right, squadron.
Yes. Yes. That's two-hundred grand.
I mean, about, let's just use round numbers, say two-hundred-and-sixty grand for twenty-five-hundred dollars.
Two-hundred-and-sixty thousand?
Uh, roughly, two-sixty-five.
That's pretty close to that number without the sliding, you know?
So, so who, and I get it, everybody should get it, but again, who's, what would really help him recruit people? Would that be the twenty-five-hundred-dollar stipend for the rotation people?
No, sir.
Um.
I mean, the, the sliding thing, you minus five, that is already gone, um, lost to Union County one, um, uh, some retirements, and, and so it's going, it's dwindling, um, so there's five off of that, so it's even, it's even cheaper than this, so.
But I'm saying, we're talking about either no sliding now, or people on rotation, so.
I just, I don't know that you can, I mean, it's just gonna kill morale, that's what the slotting thing did anyway, the compression, we're just starting another compression.
Well, but the motion on the floor is no sliding.
Well, I, I mean, if you go two percent lieutenants and down, I mean, that's more of a fair, a fair thing, because everybody's job, nobody's job is more or less difficult.
That was Commissioner Shell's original motion from a month ago now.
Right, right. But, but again, helping you in the jail, because that's where you're short, right?
I mean, I'm talking jail down, lieutenant down, I mean, it would be nice, uh.
But you really shorten the jail there, right? I mean, that's where a lot of vacancy rates, vacancies.
We're, we're short in the jail, uh, eight people. Now, when you look at the criminal side, or the sworn side, I mean, we're, we're more than that. And I think the last number that was thrown at the last meeting when we discussed this was right at, uh, twenty.
That's what I, that's what I remember, twenty.
And so you're looking at twelve people on the sworn side, and not that one is more important than the other, 'cause, you know, both aspects of responsibility to sheriff is, is important. But when you're looking at recruiting, I agree with the sheriff, we wanna try to be fair and consistent across the board, and, and we like the idea of the, of the lieutenants below that, that two percent, and I think that would be more fair, um, and more consistent. We don't wanna create more compression issues. You don't wanna create, well, well, nobody wants to do specialized positions, because now they're gonna leave specialized positions to go work rotating positions, then you're gonna be suffering on the specialized positions.
Right.
And then you look at those special, if you compromise on the specialized positions, then you're opening yourself in the jail. I'm not gonna speak about the sworn side, but on the jail, then you open up liability issues, and that's not what we want.
Well, what I was thinking, you know, now we're at forty-six-five or something for starting deputy one, if I remember right. You give them a twenty-five-hundred-dollar stipend for deputy one starting patrol or in rotation, that puts you up to forty, what, forty-nine, Casey, is that, my math close?
In addition to the two points?
No, just, just before the two points, I'm just saying, it's, we're at forty-six, forty-eight-five or nine?
Eight something. Close to forty-eight-five, yeah.
Okay.
You gave the stipend, for some folks, it, it would actually work out to be more than two percent for the twenty-five-hundred-dollar stipend.
Right, it, it, basically what it'd be is for your jailers and for your, for your lead guys coming up.
Some lieutenants in that rotation too, though. Aren't there some lieutenants and sergeants in the rotation?
Yeah, it ain't just front level people. That's correct, but he's including those sergeants and lieutenants, if you're including everybody on the squad.
Yeah, yes, right, 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 right.
But with, with the two percent across the board, I think it's gonna be more, more across the board in uniform versus just those rotating. I don't, I don't know where you come up with that number, and I'm just, I'm just asking, and it may be something that you.
Well, one thing, I, I come up with it, it was Rowan County done like the two thousand, okay, so I'm like, okay, and it's starting pay too, so. If you only give two percent to your guy that's just starting out, he's making forty-six thousand, you only gonna give him a nine-hundred-dollar with the two percent, a nine-hundred-dollar bump, so. Again, it's not gonna be a top payer like, like Fred said, but if you give him a twenty-five-hundred-dollar stipend, what we're talking.
It's real money in the pocket.
It's real money in the pocket, and it's, uh, and it puts the starting pay on up there at forty-eight-five or whatever, as good as anybody around. Now, again, I take it some of the higher-ups are not getting it, but, you know, but again, if, if we're trying to recruit, if recruitment is where the issue's at, and trying to get, again, the jails, the jails one of y'all's, it's, it's a spot bleeding.
But, but, we don't wanna have a whole sheriff's office of deputy ones either, and that's probably what we're giving.
Well, surely, surely you wouldn't do that, you know?
Yeah, I mean, there's people can go, I've got one sergeant and detectives that can go today, has been offered about eighty-thousand dollars to go, go to Catawba County. And, I mean, what's stopping her? You know, she's waiting on the slotting, I mean, that's part of it, you know? Two percent would help, I mean, it would be something, you know, you gotta give everybody some.
Okay, well, that was just my idea.
Right.
I thought twenty-five-hundred bucks apiece for, for all the patrol guys and gals, and all the folks in the jail would be a good, um, 'cause again, that's who we heard from up here a lot the other day, was the, the folks in the jail, and and anyhow, but if your motion's on the floor at, uh, at two percent, uh, without the sliding.
The sliding for sergeants and lieutenants. 'Cause from what you were, what you were suggesting, that's, that makes sense, but I'm, I'm hearing what they say, and working in that, that job, I think with everybody getting a little something, it would boost morale, and it would help retention, and we're only twenty-some thousand dollars apart between that and what you were suggesting with the twenty-five, so.
Were y'all talking, you was talking about giving the higher-ups the two percent raise, and giving the twenty-five-hundred for the.
No, just, just the stipend for the, for the rotation folks, you know?
Oh.
Again, what I'd heard before is, we just can't hire anybody, uh, starting pay's low, uh, the jail's low, you know, on staff, so. To me, as a business guy, that's what I would do, okay? I'd throw a stipend out there and go, this one I'm gonna pay for these positions I need, you know?
If there's, if there's not consensus on the folks that made the, uh, ma- uh, motion, and the second, you can withdraw that, and you can make a.
No, he's, he's already got a motion and a second, so we're good, we were just under discussion.
It's, it's just, since there's no votes for the.
I, I wanna bring my idea out.
We, we don't wanna tie votes.
What do we do?
I, I wanted, I wanted to bring my idea out there to, to, uh, at least.
I, I, I wonder if we should, if we should frame it as, uh, Mr. Kester withdraws his motion, his original motion, and, and, and then makes a, 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 a entirely separate motion, I think that would probably be the, be the appropriate thing to do, so.
Make it clear.
They have amended in the past, that, that has been their normal course.
Okay. Okay.
But with all the discussion, just to make it clear.
Yeah, just, just make it clear, trip, and we'll go from there, a new motion, please.
A motion for the two percent for sergeants and lieutenants excluding the sliding, so that would be the two-eighty-seven, two-twenty-eight.
Let's, let's don't hold us exactly to the two-eighty-seven, two-eighty-eight, 'cause there's folks coming and going within this group.
Yeah.
And it may be two-eighty-eight, eighty-eight tomorrow, or two-eighty-five, so if you can, just bear with me, and let me go through and do the two percent for those folks, 'cause people leave and come and go, and.
We'll leave the, leave the, leave the, the, the figures out.
Yeah, we'll just say the slot, just pick that option, and we'll go, yeah.
Okay, for sergeants and lieutenants as well.
All right, so we got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed. That motion carries, and you got your two percent for these guys here.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank y'all very much, appreciate it.
And this isn't gonna affect, like, the cola next year or anything.
No, no.
Okay. Make sure they get what they got, I mean, and we don't want division, that's the main thing, is, it, we all gotta work as a team.
Amen.
If you give something down here, you, you know, everybody, everybody wants to share, and that's what I want.
We appreciate y'all bringing your information, and Mr. Chairman, I appreciate your discussion and, uh, suggestion and everybody's discussion.
I promise you, I will look over that information, because again, I'm not here to spread wrong information, I just read what I see, so. I love these numbers, I'll look at them, and, uh, thank you very much.
Very good, thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Have a good night, yep.
Could I, could I ask a question?
Yeah, 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 long as it won't take.
I know, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, it's my fault, I'm sorry.
Would the, would the board consider to look at, at, uh, either tonight or a future meeting, to, to add, um, Deputy Kester to that list? I, I think he did an honorable thing trying to remove himself, and I think that that was a, a great decision, it shows great character from him, but I think he deserves that just as much as anybody else, and I'd, I'd hate to see him in that position, not to do it, because he's a valuable employee on that side, so I just.
Really, he got the two percent, so.
He got the two percent.
Yeah, he's got it, he's got it.
Okay, good. Yeah, he's in the, he's involved in that two percent.
Well, God worked it out, man.
You let yourself. All right, all right, well, yeah, what did it, I'm lost on this agenda already, I'm sorry. We got Project Cobalt, we got one more.
One more.
What do we got?
I done lost my paperwork.
Jackson's getting ready to go home.
Mr. Chairman, I will be very fast.
I'm gonna start letting Karen, Karen chair.
Oh, that's just a set of public hearings.
Yep, um, this is a request to schedule a public hearing for Project Cobalt, Cobalt Green. Um, it's an existing company here in Davidson County that is looking to expand, uh, making a capital investment of fifteen-point-four million dollars, uh, adding a hundred and twenty jobs.
Amen.
And an average wage of seventy thousand dollars a year.
Amen.
And, uh, so staff is requesting a public hearing be scheduled for September twenty-second at six P.M.
All right, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, the motion go into closed session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.